I'd like to call to order the April 1st meeting of the Planning Board, Town of Bedford. I'm Hazel Nurse, Chairman of the Board. To my far left is Jenny Goodrich, our Town Planner, Christina Kelleher, John Fazzoni, John Gingrich on my right, Galsich, I'm sorry, my right, Dirk Belido, who's our Administrative Assistant. We have no public hearings tonight, so therefore there will be no comments from the public on any issue before us. Most of tonight's going to be administrative issues. The first matter is the property at 165 Flanders Road, where we have a request for withdrawal. This is a piece of property which is owned by Cumberland Farms, and they've been back and forth with the Conservation Department and Engineering, and have really been able to come up with a final site plan, which is amenable to both the town and the applicant. So they have requested at this point, since it's been before us for about two and a half years, I think, they have asked to withdraw their application with prejudice, and as soon as they work out the rest of the problems, they will be back to us and resubmit a site plan. Jenny, is there anything to add to that?
No, you said exactly what will happen with that, yep.
I guess, could I have a motion to accept the withdrawal for the site plan for 165 Flanders Road with prejudice, without prejudice, sorry?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. The next matter is comments on the ZBA application for 20 Phillips Road. Jenny, if you could give us a little background on that. I know they were before the Board of Select last, this week, last week?
Yep.
Yeah.
Last week.
Last week.
Yep. I know. Which day is it this week? I don't know. So this is an application that was submitted to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit and a site plan review, in accordance with Section 2.3(c) of the bylaw. That section allows for the ZBA to be the special permit granting authority for special permits related to existing municipal buildings on lots zoned M1. So whereas that building is on a lot zoned M1, they needed to go to the ZBA for a special permit to essentially set the dimensional controls, parking, things like that, similar to any new uses in the M1 that used to go to town meeting, now would come back to the Planning Board or whoever was the site plan review authority. Because it's a special permit with the ZBA, the applicant has the option of doing a site plan review with them, or doing a site plan review separately with the Planning Board, and it just makes it easier to do it all with one board.
So they've made a decision, it'll all be before the zoning board?
Yes. Yep. It's just easier, you know, you don't have to notify everything twice, things like that.
For people who don't know, this is the old, was a Y, wasn't it?
It was a school building until, I think, the 80s, and then it was used by other civic groups, like Boy Scouts, things like that.
And it's on Phillips Street.
It is, yep. And so the proposed use is for the Regional Emergency Communication Center. It would serve three communities, and they're not proposing really any significant changes to the exterior, aside from, in the back, they're adding an elevator and then a generator. So they're keeping most of the facade the same. They will need to go to the Design Review Board, which they do know about, but this is really just the opportunity for the Planning Board to provide any comments or ask any questions. I will put them together and then send it in a memo to the zoning board.
I had one question, which I'll raise. I noticed there's a large generator that's going to be put on the back of the building, and I just wanted to make sure that there was some sort of noise baffling kind of thing around it, because I think they're, they do back up to some residential buildings there.
They back up to the Y, YWCA, the daycare.
Yeah, and I don't know if there's anything else.
There's residential.
Maybe on the side there. And I, so I just, I know generators can be very loud, and I just want to make sure they've got some sort of baffling around that generator, so that it, you know, when it goes on, it just doesn't blow the entire neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, it would be used during emergencies, when that would come on, so it would be similar to what it would be for the YMCA, or even town, this town building here has a generator in the back also.
Yeah.
So whatever precautions were in place with those generators would be the same.
Now, that was my only question when I looked at it, because I do know that, I think on the side there, there's some residences in the back, so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it wasn't so loud that you could hear it at the library.
And the playground for the YWCA is right there, too.
That was the only question I had on it. Didn't anybody else have any other questions or comments?
I guess, I'm just going back to the page on the, where it outlined the parking. I'm just looking for that in here. Just with the spots, it sounded like there are 22 spots, but it's going to be increased to 50 spots. Unless I misread that, sorry, I'm just trying to, my computer's being a little slow.
I'm just looking at the...
I didn't understand, like, where, if that was the case, it looked like we were adding to get to 23, and then, oh, we wanted to get to 50, but I didn't see...
No, there's 27 proposed spots.
Okay. I'm not sure we got the 50. Okay. Maybe the 50 staff?
Page 20 of the...
Then, maybe staff, I think staffing was then the 50. There were, I guess parking was my question, if there, I think, were 20 staff and 30 trainees, or maybe that's vice versa.
I would assume they wouldn't all be working on the same shift.
That's true. Yeah.
I can't remember for sure, but the Select Board might have had a similar question, so that would be done on shifts.
Since it would be 24/7. Okay, that's fine.
John, is there any?
None.
I'm just happy to see that that building is being used for something. I think it's a beautiful building. I've been wondering, when Jenny sent us the thing, I was like, I was just driving down the road the other day, and I was like, oh, when is something going to happen with that building? So I'm just glad that that's being used, and I think it's a great location, near, you know, our emergency services, near police, near the fire, and downtown. So happy to see it being redone and preserved as its exterior, because it's such a beautiful building and part of the history. So I'm in support of that.
Yeah, and I'm delighted it's going to Design Review, because I'd really like to see a little more on the mock-up and how it's going to look, because it really is a historical building, and I'd like to see it remain as it presently looks, because it really is a very attractive building. Any other questions or comments we can pass on to ZBA?
It does say 50 spots on page four. My computer's just being very slow. On page four, it said that there are 50.
Yeah, because the site, proposed site plan shows 27, so I'm not, page four of the PDF, or page?
Yes, let's see. And the program parking requirements for the proposed facility is 50 spaces.
Oh, okay.
The requirement's based on 20 staff anticipated to be at the facility during periodic training sessions, consisting of 30 trainees.
Our zoning requires that under, for that use, but with the ZBA, they can request a waiver, similar to what the Planning Board would do.
Okay.
Is there, Jenny, can you bring up that site plan? Is there, there's room for 50 spots on there?
No, there's not.
I don't know why they need 50 spots.
They're proposing, they're proposing 27 spots.
Oh, okay.
They're saying that the zoning bylaw with the amount of employee count...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Requires 50.
Right, and they can't put 50 in there.
No. And they won't need that.
Great. Okay.
That answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right, I think that's all our questions. Jenny, if you want to pass those on to ZBA for us.
Okay.
All right. The next is the proposed fee schedule, which I think everybody got a copy of, had a chance to look at.
Yep. Yep. So what we did was, we looked at the surrounding communities, we looked at our dashboard communities, and we found that we were lower in some instances with our fees. We also haven't changed the fees in quite some time. The last time that they were changed was in 2019, and I don't think that they were increased from what I could find. It looked like that they were more clarified because of the limited site plan review part of it. That's not the Planning Board, but it was just during that time period. The other thing that we added on here was, there was always confusion on the escrow amount, or the amount for the peer review. So our current fee schedule calls for $2,000, but that's never enough to cover a peer review. We went out to three different engineering groups that we've used, and we found the average price to be $8,000 for the peer review. Sometimes part of that's returned, sometimes they use the whole amount. So now, to eliminate the need for us to go to the peer reviewer, get a quote, wait for it to come back, and then approve that amount, we felt that it was easier and more efficient to ask for a set amount of $8,000 in most cases. You'll see the preliminary subdivision and the definitive subdivision are different, and that's because with the definitive, it would be six, because you would have already had some of the review done in the preliminary subdivision stage. We also moved around a few things. So before, there was the site plan review, and then the special permit separately, and we combine them anyway with the special permit and the site plan review. So if someone applies for a special permit, it almost always includes a site plan review. So we have typically gone to the higher cost anyway. We don't charge two separate fees, so we combine those on the fee schedule, so that it would make sense, and someone wouldn't question that. So now, there's just the set fee for the site plan review over 20,000 square feet. If it includes a special permit, it's the same amount. And then the site plan review under 20,000 square feet would be the same. Another new change was that we broke out the special permit for the sign dimensional parking in the new Highway Business zoning bylaw in Section 6.2. The Planning Board now can grant a special permit to, to alter some of the dimensional requirements or signage requirements in that zoning district for all uses, not just multifamily. So that's a special permit, and we did not have a provision for those types of special permits in here. It would have fallen under the $2,500 site plan review fee for a sign. So we felt that we needed to shift that away from it and call it out as its own item. And then there's also the fee for the minor modification or major modification, as defined in the regulations that were passed. As you know, we oftentimes have requests for minor modification of the Planning Board for a plan, or a major modification, which would be something that would require a new public hearing. So those are also included in there.
The one question I had is that occasionally, we have applications which are withdrawn, like the one we have here, and should there be a fee or something maybe as, you know, at the discretion of the Board if they have to do a reapplication? That was, I looked at this, and I wondered about that. Is that, or just at the Board's discretion, because to make an applicant come back and pay a full fee when they have to reapply doesn't seem quite fair often. So I didn't know whether that might be a category we'd put in here or not.
Yeah, I mean, I would recommend it to be at the Board's discretion, because there may be some instances that you don't want to waive the fee. 165 Flanders, I mean, that has been open, or was open since December of '22. So, you know, have we used that fee that we initially charged in the beginning?
Would it be worthwhile to put a category in on that, or you don't think that's necessary?
If someone wants a fee waiver, I would have them request it at the Planning Board.
Okay.
Unless you feel like...
Fine, that was the only thing that occurred to me, because we do have that happen occasionally, where something was drawn, and then they come back again and ask for a waiver of the fee, which is fine. But anyway, I didn't know whether we could do a flat fee on that or just leave it. But I think, you know, if they want to come back and ask for a waiver, that's fine.
Okay.
Are these fees reflective of the administrative effort, for lack of a better term, required to process these applications? Or are they just based on the surrounding communities?
Yeah, I started to do the math on that, but it honestly, it's hard to do, because so many other things are going on at the same time. But I do think they're more reflective of it. We have to think, you know, our salaries do increase, costs increase surrounding the, you know, review and things like that. So I think it's fair to increase our fees to reflect those increases for staff and other things that are associated with the review.
And the fees, the administrative fee, not the technical review fee, because that's 53G. The administrative fees are revenue that go into the general fund?
Correct.
Christina, do you have any questions?
I don't, thank you.
No. Okay. Could I have a motion, then?
I move that the Planning Board accept the fee schedule as presented.
Second.
John, second it. Any more discussion? All in favor? Whoops. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Since this is the first meeting after the town meeting, we generally elect a new chairman and a vice chairman for the coming year. Are there any nominations?
I nominate you, Hazel, for chair.
Thank you. I would be willing to serve. Is there a second?
Second.
He beat me.
All in favor?
Found Dirk.
Okay, and we need a vice chairman, and I'd like to nominate John Galsich.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, and thank you for your continuing support. The next item is a discussion of the Planning Board member opening. As you're aware, we are down one board member since Mark was elected to the Select Board. I would, one of the conversations I had with Jenny and with John about this was that I wanted a little more time to put a notice out to people, and we're trying to make an effort to put it out to various committees in town, to see if we can widen the membership on our board, or not widen, but give more people an opportunity to join the board. I'd just like to tell the public that this is a position that doesn't require planning experience, it just requires someone who's really interested in our town, and interested in looking at things that need to be done through planning, and we're very happy to train people, and they can come and talk to Jenny if they're interested to find out more about it. But we're really trying to widen, not widen the membership, but widen the pool in which we're looking for people. So we're going to make an effort this year to, to get the information out to things like the newcomers clubs, the schools, through notifications, Civic, all the various organizations in town. And because of that, we've lengthened the time a little bit to get the applications accepted. And I think we're looking at a date of...
May 6th.
May 6th, which means, I guess, applications would have to be in by the 1st of May?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, 1st of May, and they would be sent to Kristy Williams, our town manager, either just a letter of interest or a resume, which they'd like to present. So I ask that anyone who's interested in the audience, or anyone who's watching this on TV, please feel free to apply.
Is it an actual application, or just a...
A letter.
No, it's a, it's a letter of interest, and we'll be posting, once the Board decides that May 6th is a good date for scheduling, then we will go ahead and post that. But it's a letter of interest and a resume. But it's a letter of interest and a resume.
There's not a formal application other than that. And then we will hold a joint meeting with the Board of Select to interview the candidates.
So May 6th might be an issue for me.
Okay.
Hopkinton Town Meeting is May 5th. One night.
Well, I don't mind pushing another couple of weeks myself, just because I think it's so important if we can get the word out.
The 20th is two weeks after that.
Yeah, that's fine with me to push it out a couple of weeks. I just would really like to get this talked about and get it. The last time, it was really a very short window, and I just felt that, you know, this didn't get out. It needs to get in the newspaper still.
So the 20th is our planning board meeting?
Yes, these are on our planning board meeting nights. But I was proposing 6:00 PM instead of 6:30 to start the joint meeting beforehand.
I'm wondering, so is Select Board, would the Select Board be on the 13th?
Yes.
We could do it that, make it the 13th.
Yeah, then the new member, you can't do it that time. I was gonna say, because then the new member could join for the 20th.
Yeah, one of my concerns with pushing it out too late is that we're expecting multiple applications within the next few months.
Should we do it the 13th and then...
Chris can't make it the 13th.
Yeah, you can't do the 13th, no.
I mean, do we just, can we see if the Select Board can schedule just an off night? So it's just the standalone joint hearing rather than during one of our meetings?
Actually, that would be better anyway.
I can request it. Is there a specific week that you're looking at or for availability?
Are you not available the entire week of the 13th?
No, just on the 13th.
What about the 12th then? Which day of the week is that?
That would be a Monday.
The 12th is Monday.
Right, I mean, it doesn't have to be a Tuesday, it could be a Wednesday. Maybe if you could check with Christie and see if we could schedule a special meeting for this.
On Monday, May 12?
May 12.
Or the 14th.
Yeah, May 12th should work for me.
Do you know when some of the applicants are going to submit? Like when we're going to see them?
I don't. I mean, it will go into your packet, which would be about a week beforehand. But, okay, so May 12th, do you want me to throw out any other dates?
Or the 14th?
Or the 14th?
That week works.
Yeah.
Let's look at that week.
Okay.
You know, that should be about right because, I mean, really, the notice hasn't even gone out, it hasn't been posted yet.
No, yeah, we had to set the date.
Yeah, it has to be posted, it needs to go into the newspaper, information has to get out, so looking at that, it probably makes sense to do it that week.
And can you remind me, what's the process? I know, we like just did it.
I can tell you.
The process with the Select Board and their involvement?
So Mass General Law requires that the planning board member be appointed by the, at a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Planning Board. So it would need to go in front of both boards at the same time for that person to be appointed. Once they're appointed, they finish, they finish the period until the next election, next year, and then they need to be elected to continue the term of that member, and it's a five-year term.
The Select Board...
No, I thought they, I thought they filled out the term from the person who had left the board.
No, no.
Not until the next cycle.
Yeah, you run for election for the unfilled...
Oh, it runs the other way around, okay, all right. I mean, the procedure last time, I think we need to, we had some talk after the last meeting, last time this happened, that perhaps the procedure that we used, there might be a better procedure to use than the one we used in the fact that the candidates really needed to be interviewed independently without the other candidates being in the room at the same time, so that we had an opportunity to ask them questions. It seemed to be fairer that way.
And I can't remember, did Select Board have to, did they ask questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Do they have to?
No.
I mean, that has been the traditional...
No, but I mean, like, is there, can they be, how do I put this? Can we be the ones to ask the questions, but Select Board's not really involved, they're more just there?
No, it has to be a joint, my understanding, it has to be joint and they have, everybody...
They have to have the ability. I mean, that would just be like a courtesy thing on their part, but if they have questions, I don't mind hearing their questions.
Okay. Okay.
That all sounds good then.
But just to go over the procedure, the thing that we had been talking about was the Select Board at the last one basically said, we need to talk to the candidates, and then somebody has to make a motion to approve one of the candidates. And that just turns into a unanimous decision because...
Yeah.
So what we were saying is this time, we think it should be a, everyone says who they want, and then when we, when it's clear somebody's got a majority, then somebody makes a motion to appoint that candidate, rather than starting off with that motion so that when you've got a majority, everyone's like, well, I'm not going to vote against it, right? And then become unanimous, because it's embarrassing that people come up here and then get like no votes, even though they might be a qualified candidate.
I mean, I think it's also, I think it's fair to, I think each board member needs the opportunity to feel free to ask questions individually and make their feelings known.
And we can also look at alternating the questions, similar to what they did at Candidates' Night, was, you know, one candidate go first and then another candidate go first. I thought that was a clever way.
As an recent applicant, how do you think the process went for you?
I mean, right, I might not want to ask her, I might want to ask Christian who didn't get appointed.
Sure. I think candidly, I went through a lot of YouTube and watched old ones, so I thought it was fine because I felt like I had a sense. I do think having one person in the room at a time is more appropriate, even if that's not what's been done previously. Because even though I, I don't know, you can't 100% come up with something if you go second, but like, it is, it's an advantage to the...
Yeah, no, that was my feeling, and I think that was, didn't really bother me about the, I mean, I'm complaining about the candidates.
Appreciate you, Hazel, yeah.
But at the same time, I thought it was somewhat unfair.
I agree.
I think it was kind of strange. For the candidates to be sitting in the room listening to the other candidates.
Yes, although it seemed like in previous years, that's what was done also. But yeah, I agree, yeah, having that a little bit different.
So anyway, I'll have a discussion with, I guess Ian is the new chairman, about a procedure part of the time. Because he's the new, he's the new chairman. All right, Master Plan Implementation Committee discussion. One of the things we've talked about was disbanding the master plan because at this point...
Implementation Committee.
Implementation Committee. There doesn't seem any reason to continue the committee. However, I don't know how you all feel about it, and I'd like to kind of find that out. But I think at the same time, it's important that the Master Plan Implementation Committee have a meeting and discuss whether they mind being disbanded essentially. I think they need the opportunity to have a meeting to discuss this because I think the feeling seemed to be the last time we discussed it, the time maybe had come to disband this committee at this particular time. But I think we also need feedback from the committee itself as to whether, if they have strong feelings, they feel they should continue, then we need to consider that.
Yes, so I also sit on that committee, and after the, our discussion here, Mark and I discussed that with the board, the strong feeling was to keep meeting. However, it's, it's a bit of a challenging spot. There wasn't really a clear way that we could outline to make like an impact, right? So there was interest only because I think there is interest in making sure that we're adhering to the priorities, but there wasn't a clear path to how we wanted to approach it, and we frankly haven't met probably since the fall.
Yeah, it was October, I think you met. I mean, essentially, the planning board is now in charge of the planning department, and I guess the board itself is in charge of kind of seeing whether the goals are met, and it's really the staff that is dealing with that at this particular time. But at the same time, I think it's fair to give the committee a chance if they wish to meet and discuss this further to do that, and then we can make the final decision on it.
Does it take up any, does it take up any hours for town staff for it?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, we, there's someone that, well, we typically would have someone go take minutes. I attend, typically on Monday nights, late.
With that being said, I think we can just, I would like to disband it.
The last, yeah, the last idea that we discussed was, do we meet quarterly and kind of rotate through departments to get updates? But there's probably a better way that we can, I don't know, kind of think about what that, I mean, the intent of that is to ensure that people are continuing to work towards the line items with the feeling that if we don't meet, then you can kind of forget about like the spreadsheet. But yeah, I don't know that that's a great use of town time.
Yeah, I mean, maybe the thing to do is, I know staff has been working on it, I mean, they do keep track of this, and maybe if the staff reports to us once or twice a year about where we are on it, that would really take care of it.
Yep.
Do we need to appoint a new liaison for the planning board before that? Since Mark was the planning board liaison or the planning board representative?
Yeah, I'm...
Well, she's on, Chris is on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, but not the planning board representative. So I mean, it would just be a formality of appointing Chris, but then she can speak for the board, right?
Yeah. Could I have a motion then to appoint Christine as the liaison to the Master Plan Implementation Committee?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
I just think we can disband it, though. Just, I think, given what the town's trying to do and...
And the fact that they haven't met since the fall and it's now March and...
Yes.
You know, like, what are they doing?
And I think we also have to be concerned a little bit about the meetings that our staff has to go to other than the planning board meeting, because they are staffing other committees and we need people there, so I think we, you know, have to look at their time also.
Especially if we have to share hours with other departments.
Absolutely. All right, Jenny.
So, sorry Hazel, just to wrap that item up, are, so are we scheduling or is there a Master Plan Implementation Committee meeting scheduled?
No.
So should we, should we have...
Yeah, I will need to reach out to the group and schedule it. Another issue that we've had is the quorum issue.
Yes.
And we recently had another member resign.
No, I don't... I don't disagree with you, John, that it's probably time to disband it, but I'd want to give them a chance to actually say that, so...
If they can't get a quorum...
Then that kind of answers the question for us, right?
That'll answer the question.
No, if you try and schedule a meeting and we can't get a quorum, I think that kind of answers it, and we can then move forward, but I would like to give them a chance to weigh in.
So let's put that on the next planning board agenda.
Okay.
And, you know, if you can't schedule between now and then and can't get a quorum, then I think we can vote on it at the next meeting.
Fair, okay.
All right, Jenny, it's up to you.
Thank you. So I have a few updates here. The first one I wanted to start off with was, I know that you all had received an email over the weekend or maybe this week regarding some ongoing and recent accusations that the planning department staff is withholding information and lacking transparency, particularly regarding our work on the B-Walt project. There have also been comments made during the Select Board's open forum, and then, of course, those emails that have circulated recently regarding that. So I just wanted to set the records straight on that and say that my staff works diligently to respond to all questions related to anything, even the B-Walt. And over the past few months, we've fulfilled numerous public records requests for meeting minutes, documents, and other materials. We don't track what requesters do with the records that we provide them, we share what we have. However, records without context can be easily misinterpreted, which I think is part of the reason why this may be happening. So one of the things that has been talked about was the Mass Trails Grant and the amount that was applied for. As you know, for the Mass Trails Grant, the planning department in collaboration with other departments submitted an application in February of this year to secure funding for the next stage of the design of Section 2 of the B-Walt. We worked closely with our consultant to determine the appropriate request amount, and after careful consideration, of course, we ended up applying for $400,000 in grant funding from Mass Trails with a $100,000 matching contribution. As you know, applying for grants is a routine part of our work, and we have no reason that we would treat this project any different for how we handle the grant application process. So I definitely take issue with accusations that my staff is being dishonest or providing false information. That's not how we operate. The final amount of a grant request may change during the application process, and like any department managing these multiple projects, we don't dedicate 100% of our time to the B-Walt, so there's a lot going on. I also want to reiterate to the public, and as you, the planning board knows, we're always open to questions, we're happy to provide information, we strive to be approachable, and are continuously working to improve our public engagement. So if there's any concerns, we encourage open and constructive dialogue.
Thank you.
So the $100,000 contribution, is that a cash contribution or an in-kind services contribution?
It'll be a cash contribution. Mass Trails does give you the opportunity to do in-kind contribution through staff time, and that's something new that they added this year, but where this was design and not construction or upkeep of the trails, we said that we would dedicate the cash. It was just, in conversation with Mass Trails, difficult to provide those in-kind services.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, staff has done, in my opinion, an excellent job getting us information, organizing all of this. You know, there was some confusion between the Select Board and the planning board with all of that, and I don't think that was staff's fault, I think that was frankly, Select Board's issue. And, you know, moving forward, I just, it frustrates me that people are taking it out on town staff because this is who run our town, and this is who we trust to run our town, and I don't think they've done anything to violate that trust at this point. And so it's just frustrating to hear that from people, knowing how the process works, knowing what actually goes into it, and likely having the public not really see a lot of that, and then kind of taking bits and pieces and then formulating what goes on behind the scenes with those bits and pieces to make up what they think is happening, even though that's probably not, not the case. So I just wanted to say, and I hope, you know, my planning board members agree, that staff has done, in my opinion, a good job on this moving forward. I expect the same type of work, and, you know, we hear the public's need for transparency, we've built that into the recommendation, so, you know, we can't change the past, but moving forward, we're going to try and have more engagement, more public transparency, and make sure that the public is aware of what's going on. But I think the public also has a responsibility to understand how the process actually works and not make assumptions.
Yeah, and I think of planning, I think our staff has worked very hard to be transparent and to be available to answer questions to people that come in in this town, and I really commend them on the time and effort they put in to support the planning board and various things that go on in this town. Thank you, Jenny. I'm sorry, we're not, I'm not taking any, we're not, no, there's no public comment tonight, no. I'm sorry, this is not an open forum tonight.
Thank you.
Jenny?
So, the next update I have is that we have our first public meeting for the downtown plan scheduled for June 11th at 6:00 PM. We just scheduled it, so we don't have anything on the website yet, but we will be working with our consultant to create a postcard to mail out and information to distribute to businesses and people that live in downtown. So, I'll send it also to the planning board and ask for assistance with promoting that to the, to the public as well.
Which location was booked? I know Kristin was trying to find different.
Yeah, it'll be in this room, in the Great Hall. Yeah, there was concern, because the school committee had this room booked, but they have said they will go over to Memorial Hall.
Is that like a, just a public information session, or is that like, almost a charrette like the other ones that we had?
It'll be a little bit of both. So, my understanding is that they'll have the concept, the second design, which was the triangle concept, I believe we called it, out on the table, and they want to hear from people on their comments, their concerns, you know, and answer any questions, so it'll be pretty interactive.
Good, I think, I thought that was successful, the last couple ones that we had.
Have they, have there been any particular comments from DPW on the traffic patterns?
They're involved with our working group, so they, they've been working on the survey work, they did the traffic counts.
I noticed they were out, yeah.
Yeah, which we do have. They did some drone survey work, so we should have all of that by, I think our next meeting is early May, and then we'll have a better understanding. But DPW staff is in those meetings, yeah.
But I just, I'm interested, because I, I think that's a major component in that, that obviously people are looking at as much as anything else, and I just, you know, wanted to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
And an important component of that, that I think is commonly misunderstood, is that it's not going to eliminate traffic.
No.
I mean, you're still going to have vehicles that come through.
Right.
But it's making it more accessible. Yeah. And if we have a light, which is an option, you, you'll have to stop at the light, right? But it will allow for a better flow of the traffic. That's, that's the goal. It's not going to, you know, nobody will disappear. It'll just allow for a better flow, that's the goal.
Are they factoring in future traffic, like future added trips?
Absolutely, yes. So they did a projection out to 2035 for the projected population growth and increase in traffic. And then we're also taking into consideration any changes in zoning, so that's my other update. We're starting to work on the zoning for the downtown. I'll be meeting with the zoning working group soon. I need to set, schedule a meeting for the first stab at it, and we'll be working on doing some more public engagement. We'll be out at the farmer's markets, at the, you know, any upcoming community events to get more public feedback on the types of uses people want to see and their thoughts on the dimensional controls. But thankfully, we already have a pretty good basis for it through the downtown planning overlay district. It just needs to be expanded and clarified a little bit and, and the uses modified. So, we'll be reaching out to the public and getting some more information on that at the same time as looking at the actual, you know, traffic and the reorientation of the rotary.
Is there a representative from the EDC on your, on your committee or?
The zoning working group?
No, the EDC.
On the zoning working group?
No, I was thinking of the downtown planning.
No, but we'll be involving them, yeah. Yeah, well, I'm on the EDC, so yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that, you know, there was a lot of back and forth between the EDC, which is obviously heavily affected with this.
Right, yeah.
What does that process look like? So, zoning changes, but there are currently businesses there that would need to move in order to make some of the changes?
Like move in terms of, like, a use not allowed or?
Yeah.
Pre-existing, non-conforming?
Yeah, so they.
Right, but then.
One of the, for example, one of the suggested changes was to not allow gas stations.
Right.
So, we cannot allow gas stations. It doesn't mean that the gas stations are going to pick up and have to leave, but if they wanted to bring a new gas station in or have another gas station downtown, they wouldn't be able to.
Isn't there like a two-year gap, though?
Yep. If a use stops, like if the gas station people moved out, I can't remember the name of the, is it Shell, something like that? If they decided to leave, they abandon the use, it stays in place for two years. After two years, they abandon it. If someone wanted to come in and open a gas station, they wouldn't be allowed to.
But that's only if the property isn't used for a new use then. So if they basically stopped the gas station, right?
Right, right.
And it stayed vacant, somebody could come in within two years.
Right, but if they stop the use and then somebody else takes over and gives a new use.
Then that gas station use is gone.
The gas station use is gone.
So, we recommend, in the, in the downtown plan, there were recommendations for some better uses for downtown and clarifying some things, which would attract people to want to come in and hopefully buy a gas station and, you know, put in a new use. It's a higher value.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
A better use in town, yeah, exactly.
But if the, I guess, I, from the plan, I think some of the buildings are impacting the, like, roadway, the proposed roadway? So what does that look like?
We are trying not to have to do any, anything where we would have, need to impact any existing buildings, yeah. That was one of the reasons why we liked the triangle concept, because it had minimal impact to buildings. One of the other concepts, it would have had to be, you know, takings and things like that.
Right, you would have had to take it, frankly, so they're trying to widen it.
Yes, yes, okay.
Right, yeah, so we'd like to avoid that if possible.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So, the other part of that is the signed bylaw. So we hired Eyn's Associates after a bid process to help us develop a downtown signed bylaw. This was through funding from an earmark a couple of years ago, before my time, but that earmark is, is still there, and it's dedicated to be used for the downtown signed bylaw. So, she should be getting, be beginning that work in April. I'll have a kickoff meeting and then I'll know more after that.
And that's gonna, I'm assuming, and have a public process involved in it?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. So, downtown is definitely on the radar for the next year. And that's, that's all I have.
Yeah, the downtown is taking a lot of staff time.
I mean.
Which is not surprising.
It's the heart of the town.
Absolutely. Let's see, we have some minutes, John?
Yep, minutes of March 18th. Does anyone have any comments or corrections?
No.
Can you remind me, since I wasn't here, to, am I able to vote on these?
Yes.
I am? Okay.
As long as you read them.
I did read them, yes, I did read them.
I move that we accept the minutes of March 18th as presented.
Second? John? All in favor?
I heard, I heard you say that.
At second question mark. John? All right, that's four, four nothing.
All right, so we have upcoming meeting dates of the 15th of April and the 6th of May. Is everyone gonna be available for those meetings, for curiosity?
All right, let's just say that again, sorry.
April 15th and May 6th. And John said he's not gonna be here on the 6th, probably.
Yes, both of those were.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, is there anything else anybody'd like to bring forward to the board this evening? If not, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you. Wes Burrow, TV.